We'd like to call the special meeting to order. The item on the first, the first item on the agenda is request to approve the contract with Quadiant for the lease of a new postage machine in the amount of $468.60 per month for five years. And Angela's going to do an overview. No, I'm kidding. We need a motion?
So move.
Support.
Motion by Gerald Rowe, support by Stan to approve the item. Are there questions on it?
No, the regular meeting.
No, it's a special meeting.
Yeah.
And Jimmy Wilson is not present right now. John Newman just joined. Um, who made a support? So basically, we have a, from reading the memo, we have a postage machine that is used throughout the township, a lot of uses by the clerk's office, 14B Court building. Actually, we all use it when we needed to do it. And this current machine will no longer be allowed by the post office. So therefore, we, the team went out and got bids and specifications for a new machine that meets a post office requirement. And it's recommended, although it's the highest of the bids, it is the one that everyone's already trained on, and it has, it's the only one that has fast processing of the envelopes. So the other ones were hand-fed, fed one at a time. So that's not efficient and not what we need at the township. So have I missed anything?
If we had to switch to another vendor, we'd have to go through training. We'd have to go through all the training. This machine, we're familiar with the product, all the different departments are familiar with it. Again, it's, it's one of only four companies in the country that do this. And this particular unit has the capability to have the high-volume processing that will allow us to move more mail through it in a quicker time. No, so it's really just renewing it. The unfortunate part, it is at a higher cost just because of the way the economy is today. The contract is with Mr. Winters, so he's got that to review, and we should be good.
And there's no need for a budget amendment because we have the funding in the 267 account that can cover that. Are there questions on? Stan, support. Okay. So we'll approve this contingent upon attorney winner's approval. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? And Wilson is absent. Number two is request to award the low bid for the replacement of the roof at the fire station number four located at 8869 Textile Road to Rapid Roofing in the amount of $24,000? Is that correct? $998? Chief, is it, that's a new amount?
That amount includes a, there's a portion, a small portion of roof. Let me back up. The specs for the roof at station four were just for the shingled roof. There is a small section of roof that has the rubberized MPDM section of roof and Rapid included, just doing some maintenance on that, not that they needed it, but to inspect it, to clean it. And I think they wanted $1,100 more to do that. That was included in their bid. That's why your, the memos had a different price on it.
Do you want that included in the?
Yes, that would be sufficient to say to make sure that that has been done also. So even with that inclusion in it, it's still neighborhood of all the other estimates that came back.
Okay.
And they had did our roof on station to Central Ford Boulevard Station as well as Hewitt. Rapid has, was the contractor for both those projects.
And this will be reviewed by the township attorney as well?
I mean, Chair, in the past, as the chief said, we've had several contracts with Rapid Roofing, and I've prepared those contracts in the past. And normally, we have to have the insurance and the bonds and the things of that nature. So I can prepare the contract. I think I have the specifications.
Correct. I think this amount, though, less than $25,000, I think the bond is waived on it, if I'm not mistaken.
Well, it was around 24. It was kind of close. But the insurance, the insurance has to be there.
Yeah.
So you still have a contract.
Workman's comp insurance, right? And there's something?
Well, there's.
Public liability or?
It's a liability insurance. Workers' comp is the big one.
Okay.
If no bonds are going to be required, then we'll need, we'll still need the unconditional waivers of lien from any subs that he might use. I don't know if he uses subs or not.
Yeah, I can't recall on those last contracts whether he did or not.
The materials will be, you know, usually another one. But we've, we've used them in the past on at least two fire stations, and that, from what I understand, they've done good work, so.
And they're local.
Very good work. And if there was any maintenance needed afterward, they have been there. There was some flashing, I think they needed addressing on station three this year, and they came right out, took care of it. And they're local. They're in the township.
We have a motion in support? Contingent upon attorney review? Oh, there's none?
I would so move to request the award for the bid to redo fire station, the fire station roof at fire station four located at 8869 Textile Road in the amount of $24,998.12.
Support. We have a motion support? Contingent upon attorney review, right? Yes, of course. Any questions are coming? Other? Jimmy, is he? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Number three is a request to approve a delay in retirement adjustment to Fire Chief Copeland's employment contract. Is it? I can talk about it. So the chief was going to retire. And I met with the chief and asked if he would stay longer to help us with, Karen's here too. But we have five firefighter vacancies. We have a civil service list that has four on it. Is that correct? Four?
Five.
They have five. They're, and, but not all the candidates have everything that is required, and the union's been working with the fire chief in order to go to the civil service. Correct?
Correct. A special meeting scheduled for tomorrow.
To see about?
Establishing our eligibility list.
Yes.
With these five applicants. We currently have five openings, and we're trying to secure all of them that are on the list to make sure we can include them in the interview process that we're scheduling for, I think, in a week or two. Yeah. So we're trying to expedite all of this to make sure we can.
Right. So we had two of the new employees leave for other positions, and then we have two in the drop program.
That retired.
Who are going to be retiring, and that's never happened. And discussion, my, from the firefighters is that there's so many medical runs that before, when you were in the drop program, it was a little bit easier. You didn't have as many medical runs. So they're, they're running all night long, is what they, was expressed to us.
Yeah. The, our dispatcher, EHP or HVA, has went to a quality control type of software called Pro Q and A. And what it does, it takes the human element out of dispatching. So it's been on the 27th, we went over to their facility. They sent us a bill also for 2023 fiscal year, which included in a uptick of about 500 to 600 calls, which translates to about $10,000 or $11,000 increase in our, I believe, and they were projected increases, I think, 5%. But this is well above that. So it was due to the up, the increase in our call volumes. And that was a direct result of the Pro Q and A software and the dispatch codes that we use. Primarily, it has to do with what we call priority three calls. So we've been dispatched on quite a few more medical calls that are like a citizen's assist call. As Brenda was saying, we have people in the drop plan that historically go to what we would call our substations in a pre-retirement type mode. But in those substations, we've had quite an increase in calls too. At those, at those substations, we have two of them, Hewitt and Textile. And it has caused a cause for concern, but at our meeting on the 27th, we found a way through the dispatch codes to kind of weed out what we call more of the frivolous type calls. And we're yet to see a reduction. But going forward, I think we'll start to see a reduction in some of the calls that we respond to.
Okay.
Okay.
So we, that's something new. And then we have to establish another civil service list?
Yeah, we have not only a hiring list, there is also a promotion list that's, that's coming up in September. And then there's a contract that will be expiring next year. And on top of that, I still have several capital improvement projects that are going on, namely the trucks. But there are also, as you mentioned, the sub pumps, the painting of the stations, the roof at station four. We were looking at getting some electronic signage in front of our stations, improving that also, and the lighting around our stations also.
So the chief agreed to stay. I have asked him if he would just stay longer to help us through these trying times, and also with the process for the new hire of a fire chief and have a transition that would be smoother than?
Well, and, and even though, I've got to add this, even though I may not look it, but July 1 will be 40 years in the fire, fire service. And 20 years, representative 20 years of doing administrative work from assistant chief to chief, and the last 13 as chief of Ypsilanti Township. And there comes a time where, you know, you, you don't know how much time you got left on the clock.
I don't know.
And I'm, and I've decided that it's actually time for me to, to leave. But in conversations with Brenda, you know, I, it's that, hey, we have these challenges that remain, and if you could, and if you would, please stay to help us through some of this. So I've agreed to try to do that and actually try to preserve what's left of, I can see what's left of my, 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 this body to, to try to help the township to get through some of these challenges that they're facing. And it's been a great 13 years working for this board, which has changed, working with Attorney Winters. And Brenda's been the best supervisor that I've had in the 40-plus years on, in the fire service.
Thank you, chief. So we're, the request is to pay him $500 a pay period to not retire, help us with these challenges, and then to increase his PTO time off by three weeks, since he had planned vacations and timed off. So that's a request, and I appreciate very much the chief willingness to do this. And we're starting to put together salary for the next chief, and they're pretty much going to be a different salary than what you're currently making based on some of the Western Wayne County salaries that we have seen. So I think there's, it's going to be, it'll actually possibly put it closer to what the a new chief would be hired at as well. I mean, asking for approval.
So move.
Support.
Motion Rowe, support, I mean, yeah, motion Rowe, support Wilson. Discussion?
Yes, Madam Chair, I'd just say that I think this is appreciative of the chief to help us get through a smooth transition, but also keep some stability. So we appreciate that, and I think this is a good decision, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jimmy. Any other comment?
Yeah.
Yes, Chair?
And I too am grateful that you're staying up for the transition and to keep continuity. And I understand that this increase will be paid for by the jobs that haven't been filled.
Right. We've been short-staffed, so there's, there'll be money available for line item transfers because there's vacancies.
There is vacancies, yeah, several vacancies.
Yes, several.
Several vacancies.
Good point.
And that's part of the process of bringing on the new hires, expediting through civil service to ensure that, you know, we don't have such a lull. And, and another thing is asking, because I have to ask our staff over the summer months until we get the replacements in, where they actually count toward the staffing, but staff is working a lot of hours of overtime and is disrupting lives over this summer period because we're short. So, and I had to ask them for, for that. So this is all part of that plan, you might say, this overall plan to, to get the continuity back into the department to keep it running smoothly.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Doug, did you have a comment?
I was just going to say, I was feeling pretty good when I came in here until the chief mentioned about the clock running out, or which time is on the clock? He said 40 years, and I was looking down, I got 44, so. But, so I wasn't, I was, I wasn't feeling, feeling the love all of a sudden. But I will say right now that seeing Karen out in the audience and the chief, I think we'll have one more, I don't want to say one more rodeo, but it's one more rodeo for the contract negotiations for the, for the firefighters will be coming up here before we know it. And I will say that we've had some interesting negotiations over the years, but with the fire department, it's been really helpful to have the knowledge of the fire chief and the demeanor, as well as Karen's assistance. And I think we've actually probably, without saying anything, that would be against any of the other unions, I think we've had a tremendous relationship with the fire department, the fire union over the last eight or nine years, and going through some pretty, pretty difficult times. And a lot of that goes back to the, the team that the township has assembled and the chief and Karen. So again, just knowing that he'll be here for the negotiations with Karen is, keeps my clock ticking, I guess, so to speak. So, but yeah, don't, don't hurry so much about, you know, about the time running out here. It's, we've got plenty of time.
Point taken.
So we have a motion support, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Number four is request to approve a letter of agreement with Ask Me Local 3451 for 14B District Court. So move.
Support.
Motion Gerald Rowe, supported by Peterson, to approve the increase.
Good evening. This is our last employee group to get a wage increase for 2022. We are finally at the process of putting together some negotiation dates for this group. We have, they have been at the bottom of the list only because we have been in negotiations with so many others. But we felt it was time that they get their 2022 raise of the 2.75. So I did put together a letter of agreement and forwarded it to their Ask Me rep, and they didn't agree to it. I think it was provided in the packet that they have already signed off on it. And just waiting for your approval to, to get this to them.
All right. So we have a, and a budget amendment will be brought back?
Yes, to the next meeting. The numbers, Giovanna has the numbers. We just didn't get it in time for the special meeting.
So we have a motion in support to approve it? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Number five is request to confirm the hiring of William Turner as a new golf course superintendent due to the retirement of Tim Smith.
So moved.
Support. Motion Eldridge, support Rowe.
Although I have only talked to him on the phone, I do believe that this is Mr. Turner sitting here in the audience. I've had very good conversation with him over the phone, and I'm very excited for this move and for what he can do for the, for the golf course. We have a tentative start date of June 20.
Are you comfortable coming up and just tell us a little bit about yourself?
For those I haven't spoke to yet, I'm Will Turner. I've, I've worked in the township already for six years with Eagle Crest. I'm really excited. I, I've been engulfing at Green Oaks in the past. It's a great layout, and it's a great asset for the community, and I plan on improving the conditions there. And I'm excited to get started on the 20th. So I've, I've been in other municipalities with Pheasant Run and U of M, so I have a good blend of background and ready to get going. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Welcome.
Thank you.
So we have a motion support? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Thank you. June 20?
Correct.
Is the pumps warping? Are the pumps working, Michael? One pump still? Is that enough?
Yes, that's.
Okay. Cannot lose any more sleep over a burnt golf course. And the gods answered and gave us rain, so that's good. Number six is request to approve the agreement with the Washaw County Road Commission for installation of speed humps on Nash Avenue in the amount of $60,860.16, which is budgeted in line item 101 446 982000, contingent upon a budget amendment.
Move to approve?
Support.
Motion Jim, Wilson, support Eldridge. So they've been working on Nash Avenue for three years? Five years? Three years, I know. And this is the one that, I don't know if y'all recall, we went to the road commission and asked if we could go from 70% to 51% for signatures, because if you get 51%, you can have a special assessment district. So we, we requested the road commission to use that same threshold. But even then, because of substantial amount of renters around the street, we still had to help them get there, and they were too short. And we were able to convince two of the landlords to sign a letter in support, in the petition in support of the speed hump. So I know there's a speeding issue, or the road commission wouldn't allow the speed humps to come in. So I'm really happy that they can finally meet this threshold and get this, hopefully we'll stop the speeding on Nash Avenue. Any questions? We have a motion support, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. The next item is request to accept a proposal from Comcast for SIP trunk service and to approve the agreement pending attorney review. Need a motion?
So move.
Support.
We have a motion Rowe, support Wilson. And you have some explaining to do. I read it several times trying to understand.
Okay. So essentially, you can kind of think of the SIP trunk as the cable that goes from the pole outside your house to your house. It's the service that provides your internal, external calls. Like when somebody calls you, it has to come through somebody. In most cases, it's AT&amp;T. A lot of residential's have Comcast as their home phone service. So it's, it's that part of the equipment. Now, we received a letter earlier this month from our current provider for the service that we have at fire station one and the civic center, that their AT&amp;T is retiring the old technology that is used to provide that service, which is why we're looking to change to another service. We have a couple of different options. I went out and got quotes for three providers who I think could provide the best quality of service, because call quality is very important. It's highly important to our entire job performances here. So I think with Comcast, it is the most expensive, but I believe it would probably be the most reliable based on how it's, the technology behind it.
So currently, we're paying $850?
We currently do pay $850. Surprisingly, these quotes came in.
A month.
A month. Surprisingly, these came in significantly lower than I anticipated.
It came in, yeah. So it's going to be, there's no budget amendment needed because it's actually less cost. Did, is Clear率AT&amp;T?
Clear率is what's called a C-LAC. Essentially, they sell the service. We pay them. We pay Clear率. They provide all the technical support. If we need to call for help, we call Clear率. But at the end of the day, AT&amp;T owns all the copper that's in the ground. So essentially, if we need support, and we've been having challenges over at the fire station, so we have to call Clear率. Clear率goes, oh, yep, there's a problem. They have to call AT&amp;T, who then has to come out and fix it. So that becomes, you know, problematic because it delays. But yeah, it's.
Why, why it's so expensive, too?
It could be. I mean, T1 lines, the system that we have, is old school but reliable. Well, it's been reliable except for the last month. But the technology is, you know, really well-built. But AT&amp;T is apparently getting out of some of the copper business in the township.
We have a motion support. Any questions are coming? Mr. Winters?
Travis, maybe I missed something in this package, which is possible, trying to download it, but Comcast, I only found one page. Is that their contract?
It is not their contract. Before I was sending it to legal, I was having a few things modified, such as an auto renewal and some net terms. So.
Like the font size? Is that one of the?
Oh, I'll have to check. I will have to check the font size as well. But I emailed them today, and everything looks to be good. I'm waiting for the official agreement. I wanted to get on the agenda and get to you as quickly as possible.
I like the one-page version. That's why I was hoping that it was, this was the contract.
It's Comcast. You know it ain't going to be one-page.
Okay. So this is to accept the proposal from Comcast, contingent upon attorney review. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number three is request to seek qualifications for licensing, migrations, and training services for Office 365. So move.
Support.
Go ahead, Stan. There's a motion by Gerald Rowe, support by Eldridge, and this will be brought back to the board?
Absolutely.
And the contract is, Doug, it needs?
Well, first of all, what we're going to do is we're going to seek a partner to help with the migration, because it is a very large project that entails a lot of different utilities, a lot of different applications. So we're going to seek that and then bring those proposals back to the board for approval and hopefully move this project along.
Some people are excited about the upgrade to 365, and some are concerned.
Yes.
We have a motion support, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. The next item is request to seek proposals for a preferred network cable installer. So move. Motion Rowe?
Support.
Support Swanson? Questions or comments? These two will come back to the board. Yeah.
Correct. This is just going out to get the proposals and then bring them back for a recommendation. We've done this twice so far, and generally, the contract was every two years. This one, we're looking to do a four-year.
Okay, so I looked at everything that was in the packet. I just had questions. I didn't, I didn't understand why we do that. Like, can you just give a little short version of like why, why, why we do this, like a preferred network cable? I wasn't sure when I read it.
Okay.
What we're doing here.
So generally, the, the procurement process requires three bids for any kind of a, of a project. When we're dealing with structured wire or network drops, like we move a desk, or we need to install a camera, or we need to install any kind of network equipment, by current policy, we would have to get three individual quotes to bid that project out. That delays the project, even if I can get. out. That delays the project, even if I can get people to come in and look at it. The other challenge when it comes down to cabling is you really have no idea what its true cost is going to be until you get up in the ceiling tiles. You know, there's codes that have to be followed. So you don't know if the infrastructure is there, or if they have to build the infrastructure. So it's.
Internally, in this facility, this would be our preferred. That's what this is about, right? Our preferred installer for work that has to be done within the township buildings?
Correct. Within any of our facilities, if we need network, we go, okay, you know, we've already prebid you, prequalified. Come do the work.
Is it similar to what we do with our we have people who work on our mechanical rooms and contract for those services. So when we have a problem with them, that's the only company we use?
It'd be very similar with that. Yep.
I mean, I don't just say, am I correct?
I don't know exactly how their contract is set up.
Mike does. Because right now, if someone needs to move a desk, it's really quite a.
It is a very big ordeal.
Yeah, a lot to make that happen. Because they have to drop poles and drop data and drop phones and.
And everything connects to your network nowadays. So you're always, if you need to install a thermostat, guess what? Bring in the network cabling, cameras, phones, almost alarm panels. It's almost all on the network. This just allows us to very quickly go through and go, okay, we prebid it, come do the work. And then, you know, we'll make sure that you're still providing us the best price every couple of years, or in this case, four.
Okay. And then one more question. So I know that we've looked at upgrading the court and security and other things. That's not completely ready yet, is it? Or we started? We haven't started that, right? So would that include, like, the installer would be responsible for that, those? Or is that going to be?
No, they use Washaw County, don't they?
They use Washaw County. And yeah, they use Washaw County, which is Trendset, who is our current provider, recently won the Washaw County. So we're technically using the same right now. But in if we were to do any kind of major revamp of a building, and the cost of doing the cabling is going to be over, I think, the $10,000 threshold of our RFP limit, then we would have to do a full blown RFP just for that particular job.
So when the court up, like, the security upgrades we're talking about?
Mm hmm.
The Washaw County installer would be responsible, or?
Washaw County oversees their IT, correct? They it's their software. They if there's a problem with their software, they are the ones that troubleshoot it. It's not you.
Correct. When it comes to their software. But when it comes to the wiring, I our department does handle quite a bit of that.
Oh, you still do?
But that particular project would most likely be bid out separate, just due to the amount and the cost associated to it.
We actually pay Washaw County, I think $50,000 or something, to help us with their IT over there.
Yeah, that is for all the court software.
Right, right.
Township handles the court's phones. The county handles the court's computers and software.
So that would be part of the bid?
Yep.
Of the security. It'd be separate from this person, this company, whoever. Good question. So we have a motion support, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The next item on the agenda is a request to approve a one time recognition and payment of $1,000 to full time employees and 500 to part time employees. And this is contingent upon a budget amendment being brought back. We have 93 full time employees and six part time. That's a total amount that'll be brought back. And this is just a way of recognizing how good our staff has been with the customers and, and, you know, it's been a rough time. So we just want to say thank you to them for all their efforts, their professionalism, and their kindness, actually, that they show to all the residents and everyone when they're dealing with these kind of. It's been stressful. We can't say it hasn't been. So I really appreciate it. And I know the board has said it a lot. So this is a one time opportunity just to say thank you during these hard times.
And that includes every, like, firefighters?
It's it's not elected, of course. It's just a full time employees. The 93 full time and six part time. It's a firefighters and everybody.
Like the court union that we?
Court?
Your mic was none. Sorry, like, the court union that we approved tonight includes them? Okay.
It includes everything, just all the recreation, compost, golf courses, not you, you're not here. Kurt, but all the current employees, yeah.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
My question was, what fund? Does this just come out general fund?
Mm hmm. Yes, not ARPA. It would be come out of general. And I should have said that ARPA never even came to my mind. Is that what you were thinking, ARPA?
I didn't know. Yeah, I was wondering if that was what you were thinking, or if it was just not the generals.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Unbalanced would pay for it.
So move.
Motion Rose, support Swanson. Questions are coming? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The next item is request to approve a one, oh, it's the same one. My apologies. 11 is request to approve the installation of eight lights between Anadega Avenue and Hudson Street for the US 12 project with installation costs being paid by the Washaw County Road Commission, which is part of the grant. So move.
Support Peterson.
Motion Gerald Rose, support Peterson to approve the lighting of the service drive, which is a continual. We cut some items, Stan and I and Heather, we were involved in the beginning. And some of the items were removed. And now that they're almost done with the project, they found extra dollars. And this is a good use of those dollars. And we did let the traffic committee know and Joanna McCollum know. So it'll light up the service drive all the way down where the path is.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I just wanted to say that just driving down this, it looks so nice now, like, as everything's growing up. And even that little, like, decorative green fence looks great. And the sidewalks are just beautiful. So it really does make it look like a neighborhood, which is kind of the goal of the whole project to begin with. So thank you again, everyone here, Stan and Brenda especially, and of course, State Representative Ronnie Peterson for bringing our tax dollars home.
All right. So we have a motion support, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The next item is budget amendment number eight, and it's general operations fund. It's request to increase the budget for the installment of the seven speed humps on Nash Avenue to be completed by Washaw County Road Commission. And it will be funded by appropriation of prior fund balance in the amount of $60,817.
So move.
Motion Gerald Rose, support Peterson, was it?
Swanson.
Swanson. Questions are coming? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carrying and motion to adjourn?
So move.
For 539? Motion by Rose, support by Peterson to adjourn at 539. Thank you.